Very busy, I apologize in advance, I'm getting over a cold, but anyway, welcome to our June Board meeting, we do have a fairly short agenda today, but it's a good one. So anyway, we have a motion to approve the agenda is the first item on the list. We have a motion to approve the agenda.
To move.
To move.
Been moved by Cass.
Seconded Cindy.
Seconded by Cindy. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Oppose, nay? Agenda is approved. Moving on to communication with public comments, the board has a significant interest in maintaining the decorum of its meetings and it's expected that members of the public and the board will address each other with civility. The orderly process of the board meeting will not be interfered with or disrupted by public comment. Only individuals recognized by the board president will be allowed to speak. Comments by others are out of order. If disruptive, the individual causing disruption may be asked to leave the board meeting. Abusive, disruptive, or defamatory comments will not be permitted. State Board's agenda is full and I will place a maximum of 30 minutes for public comment. I'll give each speaker five minutes or three minutes if there are a large number of speakers. At the end of your allotted time, I'll ask you to conclude and the board will move on to the next speaker. The department will not respond to public comment aside from requesting clarification. The department may place a topic raised in public comment on future agenda. Topic from public comment that is not related to an item on today's agenda will not be addressed at today's meeting. Do we have public comments this morning?
Hello, everyone, if you wish to address the board, please use the raise hand feature at the bottom of your screen. If you are calling in, please.
Yes, go ahead.
Okay.
Come to the table, be fine.
Okay. Good morning. Thank you for allowing me to have a public comment today. My name is Kyle Collins. I'm with the Moonee Area Community College and discussing the topic of Perkins funding.
Okay.
And the plan there. Today, I want to convince you that the redistribution of Perkins funding from Iowa's community colleges to our K-12 partners is not an effective way to enhance CTE programming in the state of Iowa. I would in fact, and would in fact be counterproductive towards the state's goals. Perkins funding at DMAC and just speaking on as a DMAC employee employs three full-time work-based learning staff with Perkins funding. Ninety-eight percent of their time, efforts, and resources go to supporting the K-12 system and their work-based learning efforts. We have a K-12 Regional Planning Partnership, the RPPs as known. This is providing critical support in strengthening career pathways and getting students into the workforce with the skills businesses need. It's made up of our K-12s, community colleges, and our business partners, and that's what drives the strategy behind how we spend our money. This funding supports our regional centers and career academies and ensures high school students have access to up-to-date tools, technology, that each school would not otherwise be able to afford or offer. We offer necessary and needed CTE training also and resources to our K-12 educators. Without this funding, this may look very different. So in just looking at what the change means at a local level, under the current formula, DMAC receives 25% of the state's Perkins allocations to the community colleges, which amounts to 1.4 million, and that's allocated for this upcoming year. We got our letter for FY '26. However, based on the change in the formula outlined in this proposal, DMAC's FY '27 allocation would drop to $1 million. That's a $400,000 loss and represents 30% reduction in CTE programming that supports our communities, high schools, businesses, and industry partners that we serve. They rely on us to train their workforce, and the proposal will hurt our region, our regional economic viability, especially Iowa's rural communities, the ones that we support as a state. If that $400,000 were redistributed, redistributed among the 89 public, private, and charter schools in DMAC's districts, that would average out to $4,500 per school. Of course, that is not, that is just an average. Some larger high schools would get more in their funding and other smaller schools and rural high schools would get much less. In the language that's in the Perkins State Plan Proposal, the rationale for is quoted, and I'm going to quote it here, is "The rationale for providing 60% of Perkins funding to more than 300 high schools in the state is because it allows them financial support to expand their CTE programs and participation in CTSOs. Many CTE programs, like those in the skilled trades or technology, necessitate specialized equipment and materials that can be expensive to acquire and maintain." So I ask, how does $400,000 spread among 89 high schools provide meaningful help for them to expand their own CTE programming? How does that make a dent in the expense of purchasing and maintaining the expensive equipment and specialized equipment that is needed to do these programs? How does that help schools to hire and teach this programming at the competitive wages it would take to lure them away from industry? We as community colleges already have a hard enough time. High schools already struggling to find the industrial tech teachers and we have resources to support them. Redistributing, redistributing funding away from community colleges hinders the ability of experienced, efficient delivery systems like ours and spreads broadly among school systems that simply cannot match our economies of scale. The odds are very low that any K-12 school system, particularly a small, small school district with fewer resources and less ability to scale, could replicate the experiences as efficiently as we currently do at DMAC and in the community colleges. At DMAC, we know we can deliver this type of high-quality, cost-effective CTE programming because we're already doing it. We don't have to build a program from the ground up because we already have one. We're doing it already with 1.4 million. What would take many, many millions of dollars or more for 89 high schools to accomplish? And we know that we are doing it effectively because.
Please wrap up your.
Yes, sir. The Department of Education validated our success this last month. The proposal of this change is not necessarily a solution, but we hope we can work together as educators to find a solution and encourage legislators to continue to invest in their vision with new funding that benefits the whole rather than hurting one system in an attempt to benefit another. Thank you for your time today.
Thank you. We have other public comment today.
We do have one more public comment on Zoom.
Erin.
Greetings.
It's just quiet.
Yeah.
You did say we had another public comment.
Okay.
Yep, greetings. My name is Ann Hauser Boyens. I apologize, having a few technical difficulties, but I hope you can hear me.
Yes, go ahead, Ann.
Okay, great, great. I'm Ann Hauser Boyens. I'm the President of Iowa Valley Community College District, and I would like to discuss, much like Dr. Collins, the Perkins proposal, the split proposal. Perkins funding, of course, supports many important career and technical education programs at Iowa Valley, or excuse me, at Iowa community colleges based on our local needs assessment. These programs are tied to high-skill, high-need areas, and these funds go to work-based learning faculty, equipment, and students, and services related to career and technical education. It's also used to fund highly successful statewide initiatives such as career academies and the college and career transition counselors. This proposed shift of funds to secondary education would have a significant impact on community colleges' CTE programs and partnerships. It's estimated that this will be about a $2 million cut, and Director Snow, please correct us if this is, if this is wrong, about a $2 million cut to 15 community colleges, to the 15 community colleges without much gain when divided over the 300 school districts across the state. At Iowa Valley, we have used these funds for equipment and needs for CTE programs and in the last year to support the CTSO development and support. We use these funds to purchase equipment used by the 11 school districts within Iowa Valley District to support CTE certificates and, excuse me, certificates to their high school students. Equipping all of the high schools with high-cost equipment may not be the most effective way to use these funds. Our smaller high schools, especially in our rural areas, would be spending funds for a limited amount of, a limited number of students. In some of our high schools in the area, they have students, only two or three students in an area that would want, be interested in a particular CTE area, certificate, excuse me, CTE program. Without this Perkins funding, rural community colleges may be forced to scale back or eliminate specialized CTE programs that are costly to maintain, threatening the long-term viability and responsiveness of academic offerings to our community and industry needs. I please ask you to contemplate the proposed split for this Perkins funding. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ann. We have other public comment.
No further public comment.
Okay. We'll move on to the Director's Report.
Thank you, President Robbins, and Vice President Axiotis, and members of the board, and as always, thank you for your important service. To kick off with, we've got some bittersweet news to share, that this is Board Member Cindy Dietz's last meeting. As you know, Cindy has served on the State Board of Education since May of 2022. She has been a longtime industry leader advancing STEM and work-based learning across the state, also serving on the Governor's STEM Advisory Council and as its interim director for a period. She led state government relations, external relations, corporate communications, and community relations across the philanthropic foundation and major aviation and aerospace engineering and manufacturing companies. She began her career in journalism and as a Iowa News producer, and she recently began forging a new path in retirement. So to kick us off, although we will look forward to celebrating her service in person at a future date, please do join in congratulating and thanking Board Member Dietz for her years of distinguished service.
Thank you, Cindy. Thank you. Just briefly, let me say it's been a privilege to serve in this role and a pleasure to get to know all the, both the staff and the other board members. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Cindy.
Just jumping into our updates, I'd like to start by sharing news about our License Plate Design Challenge winner. Among 16 semifinalists from Ames, Ankeny, Audubon, Centerpoint, Urbana, College Community, Hampton-Dumont, Lamar, Shenandoah, and Southwest Valley School Districts, the department named 16-year-old high school sophomore Aaron Cho as the Iowa Education License Plate Design Challenge winner. We shared that great news during a surprise intercom announcement at Ames High School last month with a larger-than-life license plate replica. We have the winning design framed here for the board members to see, and of course, that's available on our website and throughout the news coverage as well. But at our next meeting, we will have all of the semifinalist art displayed here in the boardroom just over there. And Aaron's design, as you can see, features our state bird, the American Goldfinch depicted as an educator with glasses, and students wearing graduation caps perched upon three colorful school books. We hope to see this Aaron Cho original on vehicles across Iowa beginning late this summer when it goes into production. And as a reminder, the proceeds from the education license plate support school districts with the highest per pupil transportation costs, many of which are rural school districts. We also recently announced a new statewide partnership for National Math Stars to help identify and develop the talents of mathematically extraordinary students across Iowa. And all student groups are represented in the identified third graders who scored, and the top 2% of our state summative are our Math ISAS scores this past spring. In Iowa, our National Math Stars will start as rising fourth graders in this fully funded program that provides individualized support aligned to student strengths and interests all the way through 12th grade. All National Math Stars have a budget that's tailored to their learning and financial needs, which can total more than $100,000 in philanthropic support for a student throughout their 3 through 12 career. Supports include a dedicated family advisor, free weekly math mentoring, advanced technology and educational resources, pathway exploration and counseling, STEM summer experiences, family and community events, and much, much more. We worked with districts and schools just this past month to help notify families and invite them to apply to be considered for the 2025 cohort. We identified just over 750 students, and of those 433, applied a record amazing 57% application rate. And then late this summer, the National Math Stars will also be, or their schools will be receiving medals to provide to those identified students when they return to school this fall. And we are proud to be the first state in the nation to have this statewide partnership with National Math Stars. We are also excited to share that Iowa's Continuum of Care application is open through next Wednesday. It is a first-of-its-kind grant opportunity that supports partnerships between high-quality preschool and childcare programs to provide a full day of care that meets the needs of children and of working families. We all know that about 90% of a child's brain develops by the age of five, and Iowa's new Continuum of Care Grant will expand family access to high-quality, early childhood options that lay the foundation for learner success in school and of course, beyond. The Continuum of Care Grant is administered by HHS in partnership with the department, and it's funded by state-directed federal funds from CCDBG, the Childcare Development Block Grant. And then finally, we were also excited to announce just two weeks ago that the department is partnering with Google to offer Google Career Certificates and AI Essentials to students and faculty across our K-12 and K-12 schools and our 15 community colleges at no cost. Students, educators, and community college faculty across the state will have access to the Google Career Certificates, which help them gain career-ready skills in high-demand fields spanning cybersecurity, data analytics, IT support, project management, digital marketing, e-commerce, and UX design. They are designed and they're taught by Google employees and can be completed within three to six months. No degree or experience is required to enroll in these career-relevant, open online courses. And then addition, in addition to the certificates and courses, we will also have statewide access at no cost to Google's AI Essentials, which is a multi-module course designed to increase understanding of how AI is utilized with hands-on activities based on real-world scenarios. And then we have been routinely briefing the board on legislation throughout this past session, but now the department is working on our annual letter to the field, which will summarize legislation enacted this past session. It will be sent later this summer. Shifting into the division of pre-K through 12 learning, our CLSD, or Comprehensive Literacy State Development, School District Subgrant Application, closed last week. The opportunity totals $24 million, including $4 million in planning subgrants, and the opportunity for an additional $5 million annually in implementation subgrants over the following four years. These grants will support Iowa school districts and public charter schools in developing and implementing local plans aligned to our state comprehensive literacy plan to improve student reading proficiency. And again, this was a grant received by the department from the U.S. Department of Education in recognition of our comprehensive investment in evidence-based reading instruction spanning our standards work, high-quality instructional materials, evidence-based PD, high-quality teacher preparation, universal screening and progress monitoring, strong intervention structures, family-centered resources, and much more. Since our last board meeting, another emerging Educators Academy webinar was held in May for new and pre-service teachers and our teacher mentors. It was facilitated by our current Teacher of the Year, Ann Minks, who just has about a week or so left, and her 10-year attendees had the opportunity to reflect and celebrate their growth as an educator over the past year, and we had featured speakers, including other expert teachers across the state. And finally, in this division, the final of six meetings of our first revision team for Social Studies Standards is meeting today. The committee consists of educators, administrators, content specialists, higher education representatives, parents and families, and community partners. And as always, the Social Studies Standards Revision Process follows the same five-phase process. We are currently in Phase Two. The next phase is Phase Three, Public Comment, which includes public forums and a public survey that will occur in August and September. Also, the application for the second team, the Social Studies Standards Review Team, will open in the early fall, and per House File 2545 from the prior session, the State Board's first read of the revised draft standards must occur on or before the Board's December reading. We recently also awarded 12 STEM Best Program Model Partner Schools with over $200,000 in competitive grants as a part of a pilot program this summer. It's called STEM Best Explore, and it will allow existing STEM Best Program Model Partner Schools to extend work-based and career-connected learning through the summer. As a reminder, STEM Best, businesses engaging students and teachers, provides students with career-connected learning experiences, and helps strengthen our future workforce through the expansion of work-based learning and career exploration opportunities. Shifting to the Division of Special Education, as you know, we hosted our Teaching for Impact Conference, June 5th and 6th at the Iowa Event Center. That provided opportunities for participants to expand their knowledge and skills related to best-supporting students with disabilities ages birth through 21, and included over 1,100 school administrators, building leadership teams, early access providers, and service coordinators, educators, and providers from early childhood to high school, AEA professionals, and higher education faculty. The department's School Business Operations Team in partnership with the Governor's School Safety Bureau at DPS hosted a webinar just last week focused on the implementation of requirements for revising their school emergency operation plans and incorporating the personal electronic use policies required in recently enacted legislation into those plans. The webinar included a panel of experts across state agencies, school leadership teams, and local law enforcement to offer best practices and to answer questions about incorporating newly-developed personal electronic use policies into their school emergency operations plans. That professional learning is reported and available on our websites. And then finally, shifting into the Division of Higher Education, on the agenda today is our revised Perkins State Plan for your review. The revision reflects stakeholder feedback and comments received during our public comment processes. Themes from public comment included evaluating the secondary, post-secondary education funding split, continuing to support a strong CTE educator pipeline, reviewing our ambitious state-determined levels of performance, and best partnering with CTSOs, especially in post-secondary CTE programs. The CTE team worked over the last several weeks to incorporate the feedback, and we plan to submit the plan to USED, the U.S. Department of Education, following the Board's review for their review and potential approval. To support the field and ensuring that all students have the opportunity to earn an IRC, an Industry Recognized Credential, we also recently launched another round of the Credentials to Careers Grants. As you know, those grants support our CTE programs and ensuring that all students have the opportunity to attain and earn an Industry Recognized Credential. And last year, the department was able to prioritize over two and a half million of state-directed funds to 36 school districts to help students graduate from high school equipped with the skills and training experiences that employers seek. Applications recently closed to this round of Credentials to Careers, and we look forward to announcing the next round of awardees soon. And then finally, in the Division of Higher Education, the department joined high schools across the state to celebrate Iowa College and Career Decision Week, May 12th through the 16th, with a series of in-school celebrations, events, and ceremonies, one of which was at Davis County High School and included Cooper Dejean, a defensive back on the Philadelphia Eagles. He also hosted a Q&amp;A session where he shared advice with students. We've got a video on our YouTube channel. It's also playing in the lobby if you'd like to see it. Iowa College and Career Decision Week honors the class of 25 as they choose their academic and their pathway, whether that be two- or four-year post-secondary education, a certificate or diploma program, an apprenticeship, the military, or directly entering the workforce. It's an opportunity to celebrate their hard work and their exciting journey ahead. And then finally, for events, just yesterday, we joined the CTE team at the IACTI, the Iowa Association of Career and Technical Education Conference, with around 150 CTE educators and administrators. We also, earlier this week on Tuesday, had the pleasure of joining 40 student leaders from across the state representing many of our CTSOs or Career Technical and Student Organization at their annual Creating Outstanding Officer Leaders or COOL training. And the student leaders, of course, had such insightful questions and feedback, they're getting ready for their upcoming year of service as state officers. Also on Tuesday, Dr. Christopher Steg and I attended the Iowa Fine Arts Summit, where we helped welcome about 200 K-12 post-secondary fine arts educators, professors, and teaching artists, a number of which had semifinalists in our License Plate Design Challenge. That event is held every other year, and we sponsor it in partnership with IEVA, the Iowa Economic Development Authority, the Iowa Arts Council, and the Iowa Alliance for Arts Education. Last week, we joined STEM Bureau Chief Justin Lewis, Boone Superintendent Julie Trape, and our entire STEM team to kick off the STEM best, excuse me, the BEST STEM Opossum at the Boone High School, which provided an opportunity for STEM Best Schools to connect and share best practices for increasing student interest in STEM and connecting them to high-quality work-based learning experiences. At the beginning of the month, we also kicked off the inaugural Educator Prep Science of Reading Summit, which is supported by the CLSD grant that we talked about earlier, with our educator quality team and faculty representing all of the board-accredited educator preparation programs here in Iowa. The summit focused on aligning programs to the science of reading as they prepare future teachers to provide evidence-based literacy instruction. And then last month, we also joined Lieutenant Governor Knoyer, President Robbins, Vice President Axiotis, and Student Board Member Grace Betchel, and IWD Director Townsend at Governor Reynolds Proclamation signing for the National Charter Schools Week in Iowa, celebrating the success and the growth of our innovative public charter schools here and across the country. And then finally, with President Robbins, and again, with Grace, we joined Governor Reynolds' celebration of our 2024. we joined Governor Reynolds' celebration of our 2024 Milken Educator Award winner, Holly Hunter, at a formal ceremony at the Capitol. She is a third-grade teacher at Grinnell Newbrook Community Schools, Davis Elementary. Finally, for updates for the state board's committees and other department boards, we've got the Non-Public School Advisory Committee having met on May 13th, and the Community College Advisory Committee meeting in August, on August 6th. And then SEEP, our Special Education Advisory Panel, met in May, as did the Board of Educational Examiners, and Iowa's College Aid Board of Commissioners met just this past Friday, June 13th. And happy to answer any questions about those meetings or about our department report.
Do they have questions for their director? Very well. Thank you for your report. Next item, we have the Non-Public Advisory Committee update. Brian?
Morning. As, can you hear me okay?
Yep.
As Director Snow just indicated, we, Non-Public School Advisory Committee meeting was held May 13th. There's maybe three things I want to update you or comment upon. Number one, we got an update from Thomas Mays on the appeal that was part of our consent agenda last month concerning the ESA. Secondly, Eric St. Clair graciously came and updated us on the summary of current legislation passed during the 2025 session. And thirdly, with regard to AEA funding for non-public services, Eric Hites, Tina Waller, Whaler, sorry, and Director Snow presented a review of the current legislation regarding how non-public schools work with public districts for education and media services. That was well-presented, well-received. The participants at the meeting will report to their respective constituents that, and hopefully enhance the understanding and process for working together in that regard. Future meetings are to be scheduled. Questions?
Any questions for Brian with the non-publics? Just a question for Brian, personal interest. I see the big poster above.
Yeah.
That's cool.
Yeah, sun and log, yes. He's a, he probably violated several copyright.
All right. Thanks, Brian.
Yep.
All right. Moving on, Cindy, on the agenda, which is the consent agenda. We have a May 8th meeting minutes. We have rules from Chapter 19 with Charter School Performance Framework. We have appeal for the Education Savings Account and Horizon Science Academy Davenport Amendment Request, all on the consent agenda. Are there any questions on the items on the consent agenda?
I move we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second, Cindy?
And moved by Brian, second by Cindy. Any further discussion? Very none. Those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed, say nay. Oceans carried. The consent agenda is approved. All right, we have the Simpson College Educator Preparation Program approval. Come on in. Yeah. The timing was impeccable, but then you said.
You were sitting over there, and I thought that there was still the public comments, but open that here. Thank you for your time, members of the board, and President Robbins, Director Snow. I'm here today to present Educator Preparation Program for Simpson College. My name is Maryam Rodzable. I'm Admin Consultant with the Educator Quality Team, and I have Emmy Mayer with me here. She also participated and takes some leadership role in this site visit. Also, my other colleagues, Dr. Tekep and Dr. Lindsay Harrison, who are not here in the room today, have participated in some of this review, so I would like to recognize that. I also have Kate Artler, yes, here from Simpson College. She serves as the Chair for the department. And at the end of my presentation, she will have some things to share, and then we are open to answer any questions. The site visit was not the only piece that was part of this review process. The review process, like other processes that we have explained, has taken about two and a half years since the program has started. There's self-study followed by a report, a desk review of the program. And in that desk review, there were 18 experts engaged in the review in addition to the team of my colleagues. Everybody reviewed the different standards on the report and provided feedback and questions to the program that they responded to after, before the site visit. And then we also provided a report that is attached to this after the site visit, which the program responded to. There were 45 survey responses analyzed from different stakeholders. Thirty-plus course syllabi were reviewed for all the endorsements and the programs that they are offering by both BOEE and our team. Twelve-plus interviews were conducted, five classroom interviews. I do want to mention that the classroom interviews, we picked that in a way that we can reach out to every student in the program from early on to the later in their student teaching. So that's why it's five-classroom. But we have tried to reach every level of students. The classroom interviews are not an observation of that specific class, but more of an opportunity to have those one-on-one discussions with the students to understand their experience. And 12-plus student files were reviewed to ensure that the required records are kept for the students. In addition to our review, Higher Learning Commission has reviewed the program, and they have the approval. The curriculum exhibits were submitted and reviewed by BOEE, Board of Educational Examiners, and they reviewed and approved that. And of course, our review was focused on Chapter 79 and a level of review of Chapter 13, which I'm presenting the report to you about. Our report is focused on continuous improvement. So in addition to concerns or areas that we didn't feel that the program was in compliance, and we asked them to address that. We have provided recommendations and strengths of the program. As you know, we have started providing what were some of the concerns that had happened in the previous site visit in seven years ago. And we also track the improvements that the program have made. And Simpson was one of those cases that, in so many cases, they had made a lot of improvement that has led to some of the strength that they had this time. Their next, one of the standards that we review is governance. And this has to do with whether the structure is functional, and also if there are appropriate resources and support for the sustainability of the program in place. What was observed was strong leadership and campus presence and collaboration. And here, I do want to pause and recognize President Bayer, who passed in April of 25th. When we were on-site, he met with us, and he provided his support. It was very clear that he was so supportive of this program. He was so hands-on. I read some of the ceremony material, and their chaplain, Mara Bailey, had said, "The man who never stops showing up." And it was so true about him. And it broke my heart, actually, when I saw that, because he was one of the best leaders I had seen, being so hands-on and supportive of the program. In addition to that, all the faculty and administrations are in very good collaboration, and they are taking the lead in this department. So I would like to recognize that. Some of the recommendation that was provided to Simpson was utilizing the assessment data when they are meeting with their advisory committee. The advisory committee includes experts from the field, from the K-12, and they do a very good job connecting with them, even having one-on-one meetings with them. However, we weren't sure if there was a system to share the data from the program to also get some feedback about the program, because the feedback they were getting was more about what's happening in the field and how they want to respond to that. But if they share the data from the program assessment, they can also get some feedback about that from those groups. We ask that they formalize the meetings. One of the areas that always tend to be in strength, but also lead to some recommendations or concern, is when a program is small and the faculty are working great together, there is a lot that they get done in a non-formal way without meetings or without tracking an agenda. And this is what was happening. So we ask that they include some formal meetings and formal meeting agenda and take notes and do some follow-up, kind of track that, what are the actions that they have taken after those meetings? Some of the other concerns were about assessment responsibilities that the department chair had, and she probably will say, "No, I don't agree with that." But from the type of, all the different responsibilities that was involved, we wanted to make sure that she has appropriate time to do that, but also that if another person was to do that, there is an appropriate resource provided for that work that is required to be done. So we were mostly focused on the sustainability of this work. One of the concern that was resolved was integration and communication of the conceptual framework. They had done a very good job developing the conceptual framework. They needed to integrate it better and be more, speak to it as in the different coursework with the different faculty members and embedded throughout the program. So we asked that they put more emphasis into that, and they have put some plans in place, and they have started integrating that in more clearly into the syllabi and their assessment. The next standard that I'm going to report to you about is faculty standard. I was very impressed that this department was very well-staffed with full-time faculty members. That's one of the areas that we see a lot of colleges are struggling with, utilizing a lot of adjunct faculty members. That's not necessarily a bad practice, but usually, full-time faculty members tend to plan long-term and put some processes in place that supports the quality of the program even more. They had nine full-time faculty members. They are fully staffed, and they are utilizing minimal number of adjunct faculty members. The cohesiveness of the unit's collaboration was very clear. The experiences of the faculty and the culture of inquiry that they model for their students was very clear, and it was brought up by the students in many different interviews. Some of the recommendations we had was a formal policy for communicating with the adjunct faculty members. Again, because they didn't have as many adjunct faculty members, those internal informal communications were taking place. But we asked that they make it formal, just so there is a process in place that is consistent across the unit. Professional development, communications also. This was another area that a lot of the adjunct faculty members are tending to be teachers, currently practicing teachers. So we wanted to make sure that professional development opportunities that are also available at the college level were communicated with them, and they're available to them, and that it was mostly communicated with them, that there are also professional developments available for them to attend if they want to. There was also a resource available if they want to attend conferences. And that was also another area that was strength, but needed to be communicated. They also, through this process, it basically, we asked that they review the, and revise the current professional development structure, and they have put a very good plan in place with those who need to be involved and the communication, and then what the faculty members need to expect as soon as they are hired, or adjunct faculty need to expect regarding their review process and the professional development that is available to them. Some of the concern that was resolved, the one concern that was resolved was around faculty continuous engagement in the K-12. This is the 40 hours requirement of engagement in the field, in the K-12, co-teaching or teaching a subject area, and every faculty member need to complete these 40 hours within five years in the program. This was another area that was also a concern in the previous site visit, but they had addressed the concern from the previous site visit. The issue was that there were two faculty members that were out of compliance. A recommendation to resolve that concern was to have a very clear policy. And they developed a policy that is now communicated that always helps engaging faculty better and communicating and requiring that that be completed. So the policy was put in place, and they provided evidence that the two faculty members that were not in compliance were now brought to compliance. The next standard that I'm focusing on is the assessment standard. The assessment system was very efficient, organized. There was quality feedback provided to the students. There is work to continuously improving the assessment system. And this was one of the areas that had improved very much from the previous site visit, and it was mostly strengths that we observed. Some of the recommendations include included utilizing the data for programmatic improvement. So mostly communicated the assessment data with other faculty members, and also meeting intentionally to utilize it to improve the program. Some of the resolved concerns were, it was around the Alignment of Interestate Assessment and Support Consortium INTEST standards that are the nationally-recognized teacher appropriation standards. Even though the program was meeting many of these standards, the standards were not clearly defined and aligned with the course activities and was not communicated very well with the students. They, on the other hand, had done a very good job aligning the curriculum with the ESS standard or International Society of Technology standards. And so what we asked them to do was to make as clear alignment for every coursework that students are taking with the INTEST standards so that they can better show the progress of the students in meeting those standards throughout the program. And they worked and brought that to compliance, and they submitted the, updated the curriculum and submitted that to BOEE again so that it's all reflective of that work. The clinical practice, there's a consistent process and communication for the field. The clinical practice, there's a consistent process and communication for the field placement. Very good way of recruitment of the teachers to help. Some of the recommendations we had was some finding some way of consistency on tracking the diverse experience and requirement in the clinical experience. So who are the student, what are the groups of diverse learners that the students get to work with when they go to the field? And how do they track that so that they can make sure that students get an opportunity with as many of those groups of learners who they need to support before they start their student teaching? So they have put some plans in place on how to track that, how to communicate that with the students and also provide additional opportunities, making sure that everybody have equitable experiences and opportunities. A resolved concern was improving communication regarding the candidate assessment, even though it was a shared practice between the supervising faculty member and the cooperating teacher. The grade was only the result of the overall assessment of the supervising teacher. So the, we asked that they include a collaborative and more clear opportunity for both cooperating teacher and the supervisor to collaborate on deciding about the passing and meeting the requirement of the field experience. There was also a requirement of candidate opportunity to communicate with the parent and guardian of the students. That was not very clearly tracked and collected in the candidate's record and they provided that as a policy and a requirement in the checklist that they had as a responsibilities of the field placement supervisors. The teacher knowledge, skills, and disposition is one of the last standards that we reviewed. They show that they have a systemic process for tracking candidates throughout the program through the, what is called portfolio, where they track and collect the students' progress and the assessment data. They, the candidates also had opportunities to meet one-on-one with their advisors very regularly. So that was very clear that this was communicated very well. The recommendations was improving more in-depth preparation and experience to support English language learners for all the students. And I'm going to go to the concern because the way that they can address the concern, it also addressed the recommendation that we had. One of the concerns was integrating preparation to support students with dyslexia for the physical education and music education students. And then also integrating literacy within the content area for the candidates. They're doing a very good job integrating literacy preparation for their elementary and generalist students. But for secondary, we always ask that they include a course or additional preparation so that they can, every student in different content area, learn how to work with their student to help them read in those different content areas. And so they created a course that will address this reading in the content area with also integrating focus on English language learners and students with dyslexia so that the students who are in those other programs also learn how to work with those students' needs. And all the students will be required to complete that course before they are recommended for licensure. With that, I'm coming into the last slide, which I would like to recommend Simpson's College Teacher Preparation Program for full approval until their next review, which is scheduled for 2031, 2032 academic year. We will do a one-year follow-up with them upon this approval. Next year, we do a follow-up visit to make sure that they are in compliance with all the concerns that they have resolved in this review and they will be required to report specifically on the concerns in the next three years in the annual report that they submit.
Good morning. As Miriam said, my name is Kate Lurseth and I am the department chair at Simpson. I've been there for eighteen years and department chair for three. So I just kind of just start my department chair out with the site visit. So first of all, I want to give a huge thank you to the visit team and the Department of Ed members for creating a process that allowed for reflection, collaboration, and improvement. It really was a very seamless process that allowed my department to have a lot of communication and really think through some finer points of what we do at Simpson. At Simpson, we tend to have faculty who teach with us for many, many years. They get hired young and then they stick around forever. And so they kind of find their home and then work hard to prepare future Iowa teachers. In the past few years, we've had several longtime faculty members retire. Congratulations to them. And our administration has shown their support by continuing those tenure track lines, allowing us to hire five new faculty in the last three years. The accreditation process allowed my department to review our procedures and policies where new faculty were allowed to contribute to those decisions and bridge their ideas with faculty who've been there for a very long time. One of my new faculty members after the visit, after the self-study, said how great it was to get to do a deep dive into how we meet standards, gateways, and all the other things right from the start and then get helpful feedback from the site visit team to improve our program. She was super excited to see the dedication to helping future teachers be as prepared as possible, not only from Simpson and our responsibility, but from the Iowa, from the Department of Education and our colleagues across the state. From the self-study and visit comments, as Miriam said, we really focused on updating and improving our conceptual framework, our K-12 contact hour requirements, assessment plans, and providing explicit instructions for all students seeking any K-12 licensure in ESL, dyslexia, and literacy. Since you have all of those things, I'm not going to go into detail, but I'll be happy to answer any questions in the Q and A section of this. Finally, I want to share some exciting things that are happening at Simpson right now. I just spent the last four days doing our first-year orientation and it looks like our L ed numbers are double what they were last year. So something is going in a good direction where we have higher numbers starting out coming in. We always tend to get a few that want to go into teaching. We have like eighty-five that are pre-med, right? They decide, "Wait, I really love teaching." So we usually get a few more after that, but it was very exciting to leave our first-year orientation knowing that our numbers are that high. If you're not familiar, our All-in-for-Iowa Scholarship Program is up and running. And so we have three different ways that we are committed to making a Simpson education accessible for families of all means. The first is that we offer, we offer three different full-tuition scholarship programs. The first is the Simpson Hundred K Promise. The next is the Ninety-Nine County Full Tuition Program. And it's funny, at that orientation, I saw somebody from my small town who came up and was very excited. Their child had gifted that tuition and it was huge for their family. It was, it was a pretty cool offer. And then the last one is new this year and students are taking advantage of it. But it's the full tuition offer for Des Moines and Indianola students earning above a 3.5 GPA in high school. So we had a ton of Indianola and Des Moines Public students at our first-year orientation. So I'm super excited to see students taking advantage of that. And then the last thing I want to share is that the faculty in my department have taken all opportunities to grow in our knowledge of the science of reading. All elementary literacy faculty will be letters-trained by the end of next year. And that's me. Our new faculty is already letters-trained, so I jumped on and did the letter training. And while it is, it is no joke, a lot of work, it is beneficial, right? Some of the stuff is repeat, but it's great to get all that information. So it's a, it's a great opportunity for us to have. Both elementary literacy faculty attended the department's summit on literacy for educator prep programs just a few weeks ago, which was great to get to collaborate with other colleagues across the state. Simpson volunteered to submit our literacy workbook for review and offered to review another college's workbook through the peer review system that was set up by the department. And then we have added a requirement that started this past year that all L ed candidates are required to get a reading endorsement. Since we brought on our new literacy faculty in the fall, we just feel elementary teachers need to have that reading endorsement. And so it's been super successful and we're, we're pretty excited to share it at our Forbes fours this coming August when we get there. So thanks for allowing me to share a few of those things that are happening at Simpson and open to any questions that you have about the program.
Okay. Questions from the board, please. I have one curiosity question for you. Is it Sino University in Kenya?
Let's see. Oh, in Kenya, for the faculty member that goes to Kenya?
I just, it was listed under partnerships.
So we have a new faculty member that she is our early childhood SPED person. And in her previous work, she is working in Kenya to build a dyslexia school. And so last summer, she traveled there to kind of help set it up and run the curriculum. Her goal is then to have a partnership with them so that in May term, our students can go and work there over May term. So that's, that's the end goal. Yeah.
Kind of stuck out there.
Yeah.
There were quite a few concerns that were listed. Was that more than normal or?
It was less than normal.
Oh, that's, even better. Well, I saw that they were resolved, which I understand. No school or program is perfect.
I would say that our team has also become net-picky and the site visit members because we have been able to work on a lot of pieces that sometimes didn't exist when we visited the program, like an assessment system sometimes didn't exist. But now we are seeing the assessment systems and then we're like, okay, you're missing this piece. So it's more about those additional pieces that they can do to continue to improve it or whether it's efficient or effective or not. So I would say that we still continue to provide concerns and we tell the programs, even if you have a good program, you probably will see some concerns and we want you to utilize that to create a better, you know, just to use it for continuous improvement opportunities.
And the process is intended to reflect high expectations and to support continuous improvement. So.
Correct. Yes.
I do enjoy the details you provided about the site visit, how it was conducted. I do love the correlations you've been testing, President. Thank you for.
That was your feedback and we appreciate that.
Other questions for Simpson College? Bearing none, the recommendation is toward full approval for Simpson College Teacher Preparation Programs through the next scheduled review, which is in 2031, 32. I would entertain a motion, please.
I would make that motion, Joan.
Thank you, Cass.
Second.
Second by Brian. Any further discussion? Bearing none, favor indicated by staying high.
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 Opposed? Nay. Program is approved.
Thank you. Thank you.
Right. Item five is the Perkins State Plan.
Are you ready with this? Something wrong here. Inside. Just kidding.
Morning.
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 All right. I'm Heather Meissen. I'm the administrative consultant for career and technical education in the Bureau of CTE and post-secondary readiness, where I oversee regional planning partnerships, IRCs, health sciences, and the CTE portion of community college accreditation. And I also support work-based learning, career and academic planning, and computer science work. I'm joined today by Kale Hutchings and all left ends introduce themselves.
Thanks, Heather. My name is Kale Hutchings. I'm the Science Industrial Technology Consultant in the Bureau of CTE and Post-Secondary Readiness. We are here today to share updates about the strengthening career and technical education for the Twenty First Century Act, also known as Perkins Five Federal Grant Funding for our CTE programs.
All right. The financial support to maintain high-quality CTE programs comes from Perkins Funding and the strengthening career and technical education for the Twenty First Century Act, or Perkins Five, provides nearly $1.4 billion annually to support CTE programs across the nation. In Iowa, these funds are allocated to high schools, community colleges, and charter schools. The amount of money that each state and each local community receives is determined by poverty levels and population. Perkins Funds can be used for a variety of things to support CTE programming, such as professional development, the development and improvement of programs of study, career exploration, data collection and analysis, and career and technical student organizations. Each eligible agency that desires assistance for any fiscal year under the Perkins Five Act must prepare and submit a state plan and in subsequent years, state plan revisions to the Secretary of Education. The Iowa Department of Education's 2020 Perkins State Plan extends through the 2024, 2025 school year and we have recently completed Iowa's new four-year state plan. Writing the four-year state plan was a multi-step process that started with the setting of state-determined levels of performance and gathering feedback from different stakeholder groups. These stakeholders included secondary and post-secondary educators, business leaders, and representatives of special populations. We incorporated the initial feedback that we received into a draft of the state plan. We then posted the draft of the plan to our website for a thirty-day period from mid-March to mid-April and held two public hearings to gather more feedback from stakeholders. We received a significant amount of public feedback about our state plan, which Kale will be discussing in further detail in a bit. Because of the amount of feedback received, we asked for and were granted an extension to submit the state plan to the U.S. Department of Education so that we had time to comb through all of the comments and make additional updates to the state plan. We have now completed the final draft of the plan and the next step in the process is for the State Board of Education to approve the plan. After board approval and governor's signature, we will submit the plan to the United States Department of Education.
Under the Perkins Five Act, states are required to engage in broad stakeholder consultation during both the development and implementation of their state plans. To meet this requirement, our team designed a multi-phased approach that gathered input from a wide range of voices while simultaneously shaping the plan itself. In October of 2024, a statewide stakeholder meeting facilitated by the Association for Career and Technical Education brought together educators, industry leaders, and community partners to discuss key topics such as industry-recognized credentials, work-based learning, career and technical student organizations, concurrent enrollment, middle school career exploration, and the CTE teacher pipeline. Perkins Five also requires states to clearly demonstrate how feedback received is addressed in the development of their state plans. To meet this requirement, the draft plan was made available for public comment, as Heather mentioned, between March 24 and April 24 of 2025. Input was accepted through multiple channels, including email, postal mail, and two public hearings also mentioned. Department staff reviewed and synthesized all public comments to document not only what was submitted, but how it directly influenced the final version of the plan. The priorities that surfaced were directly incorporated into the plan. Support Iowa's vision for a world-class education system. We are expanding industry-recognized credentials to open up more post-secondary pathways for students. Work-based learning is connecting students to real-world experiences, supporting both multiple pathways and narrowing gaps. Strengthening the CTE teacher pipeline through recruitment and development aligns with our focus on educator quality and retention. Introducing CTE in the middle grades supports early literacy and numeracy through application while building awareness of future career options. And career and technical student organizations promote leadership and employability skills, helping us narrow opportunity gaps and engage more students in meaningful ways. helping us narrow opportunity gaps and engage more students in meaningful ways. Expanding regional career academies improves access to high-quality programs statewide, especially in rural areas. And finally, adopting the modernized career clusters framework helps our approach and provides alignment for both curriculum and teacher development. These initiatives are tightly aligned with Iowa's education priorities and position us to deliver on our mission. Aside from the updated priorities and initiatives, we also incorporated feedback in terms of Iowa's Perkins Five allocation that was, that will be accessed by eligible recipients. Iowa will receive a little over $14.5 million in Perkins funding for FY26. In the first year of the four-year plan, funding will be distributed 46.5% to high schools and 53.5% to community colleges. In years two through four, the formula will shift to 60% for high schools and 40% for community colleges. 7% of the total allocation will be reserved for statewide initiatives that support system-wide improvement. These will include, but are not limited to, college and career transition counselors, professional developments for CTE educators, support for career and technical student organizations, investment in industry-recognized credentials, and expansion of work-based learning. While CTSO alignment will remain a requirement for high schools in the Perkins Plan, it will move to being highly recommended for community colleges.
We also received a significant amount of public feedback around Iowa's state-determined levels of performance, especially around those related to work-based learning and industry-recognized credentials. Based on the feedback received, along with the consequences of not achieving at least 90% of these targets, we evaluated several of these accountability indicators to ensure that we still had aggressive but realistic growth rates that align to our commitment to student success in CTE programming. Next, I'm going to show you a few examples of some of the indicators listed on this slide along with their targets for the next four years. So this slide shows previous data and future goals for our accountability indicator related to work-based learning. As you can see from the blue line on this graph, we have had steady growth in the number of secondary students participating in work-based learning over the last several years compared to the goals we set, which is shown in green. Based on this historical data and our current initiatives in place to help students attain more work-based learning opportunities, we have set future growth rates a little more aggressively and anticipate over half of CTE concentrators participating in work-based learning experiences by years three and four of our next state plan. This slide shows our targets for industry-recognized credential attainment. This is a new accountability indicator for our Perkins State Plan. We are still collecting industry-recognized credential data for this current school year. So do we, so we do not have any historical data to show. However, our data team did calculate the percentage of high school students earning community college awards, which falls under that measure, while still in high school, and this is what this blue line represents. With the development of the list of approved IRCs, the annual credentials to careers grant, and the new IRC diploma seal, we anticipate a 5% increase in IRC attainment each year over the next four years. One last example I want to show you is for post-secondary placement, which is one of our post-secondary indicators and aligns with the department's vision and mission. This accountability measure represents the percentage of community college CTE concentrators who remain enrolled in post-secondary education, are in advanced training or military service, or are placed or retained in employment. As the orange line indicates, we predict that we will continue to see growth in the number of students placed in post-secondary opportunities after community college.
And as we move into the final stage of the five state plan process, the key next steps include securing State Board of Education approval and governor's signature, both anticipated this month. Once approved, we will submit the plan to the U.S. Department of Education by the end of June. And then these final actions will ensure Iowa remains aligned with federal requirements and positioned to support high-quality CTE opportunities statewide. If time allows, we will take any questions you may have. Jeff Fletcher, who oversees Iowa grants and Perkins accountability and monitoring, is also here for assistance.
All right. Any questions from our board members about the proposed Perkins Plan?
John, I've got some questions. With the formula split, do we know, I couldn't find a link within the report, where we could see the actual impact to how the split changes the allocations that go to the community colleges and how it will impact what the K through 12 schools actually receive?
They are, there's two tables towards the back of the report that have the overall allocations for the secondary versus post-secondary, but we do not have it split out per community college.
So do we know that with this split, the impact is actually the K through 12 schools are going to get enough to make a difference in the work that they're trying to do, knowing the impact is going to be significant to the community colleges? I mean, hearing the public comment today, the community colleges are going to result in eliminating positions and the K through 12 schools aren't going to receive significance amount, significant amounts of funds. So how are we balancing that?
Yeah, so that's a great question. And one of the shifts from Perkins Four funding to into our Perkins Five funding that we've been operating is that Perkins Five funding at the consortium level is, which is a group of school districts, mostly smaller rural school districts, is, is instead of an allocation or allotment or an even split by the number of districts, it's now calculated based on need. And that need is expressed through the comprehensive local needs assessment tool that is completed every two years. That's a basically a large stakeholder gathering of folks in the district determining, you know, what they need. And with those needs, they approach the consortium. And then the consortium directors make the choice on funding those needs. So that is a shift from the previous Perkins Plan and something that a lot of folks are sort of getting up to speed with in advocating for those different needs in their program.
So Perkins Four impacts just K through 12 or both K through 12 and community colleges?
The needs-based component of Perkins came in on Perkins Five. And that was what we've been operating the last four years under, yes. And both our secondary and post-secondary recipients are under that Perkins Five need-based type of exercise for that comprehensive local needs assessment.
Thank you so much, Phil. And maybe just some, some broader framing. The state determines the inclusion of both secondary and post-secondary CTE programs, as Iowa has done. And it also determines the split. So to pull up for a moment, the national average in the split determined between secondary and post-secondary is about 64% secondary, 36% post-secondary. And we had received public comment, Iowa's in the top five for the post-secondary set aside about wanting to review that split decision. So the team has really worked to balance the recommendation reflecting both the secondary and the post-secondary feedback and what is before the board.
Well, but what gives me heartburn is that isn't Iowa number one for post-secondary actual enrollment of students in CTE that are, that are taught by community colleges? So CTE is being delivered by community colleges to high school students? So.
Yep, include through concurrent enrollment, through about a $30 and a half million investment of the state for concurrent enrollment. I think that the other thing that was raised in comment are the multiple state programs that support post-secondary CTE, in particular, post-secondary. So W-TED at $15 million, CAF at $5 million, ACE at $6 million. So again, the team really worked to thoughtfully balance different comments and different feedback that that was representing different perspectives.
I know it's not a requirement, but I think this would have been a great piece to bring through the Community College Advisory Committee, just so we could have had all of the perspectives around the table and, and bring that education back to the board.
We did have stakeholder, like, feedback groups initially before even writing the state plan that did include representation from secondary, post-secondary business industry as well. So there was community college representation. It was not the Community College Advisory Council, but we did have a big stakeholder meeting back in October.
Well, but I don't know that I, I fully can understand how this still impacts that. What I'm hearing you say is that we're aligning the split of the funding to be more aligned with kind of national averages. And I don't know that we fully know that how this will impact Iowa students. And are we distributing the funding in a way that aligns with where the impact will be with our programs and where our students are enrolled? And that's, that's my question. So because our enrollment is so high. And I'd love to see how that formula, when I'm hearing community colleges make public comment today that this formula shift is going to result in reduction of instructors for programs and it's not going to result in significant amount of funding back to the public school system. Are people connecting those dots and realizing the impact it's actually going to have to their students? So are these districts seeing that they may actually lose instructors that are serving their students right now and not be able to have access to those programs?
So I, I think an important note is that with the formula funds based on this proposed distribution, K-12 high, high school secondary CTE programs can still choose to utilize those funds to support their strong partnerships with community colleges. So if that is ultimately a local context, a local decision made, then that would reflect the, those respective partnerships and collaborations.
Other questions from the board?
Yeah. Oh, go ahead. Go ahead.
I was just going to say, after the formula was, was developed, were any K-12 partners and community colleges, were they brought around the table to see the plan and, and talk, talk about it? Or was the formula developed and, and was there, was there any discussion with the partners after the formula was developed?
So the, the initial proposal was to maintain status quo split that went out for public comment. And then we began receiving secondary comment about evaluating the split that I, that we brought to our monthly community college presidents meeting, that there had been feedback about evaluating the split. Then we received additional comment from post-secondary in support of maintaining the split generally. I think it's fair to generalize the comments that way. Is that correct?
But, but the partners weren't all brought around a table to talk about the split after the formula was developed?
After, to talk about the proposed split, unfortunately, our timeline has not allowed for that. And, and I think the comment about also bringing it to the Community College Advisory Council would be ideal. But we are unfortunately behind schedule on our Perkins State Plan for implementation this coming school year. So I, I think those are great recommendations. But, but we are at a point in the timeline that has not allowed for that.
Hey, Brian?
Yeah, some, some, some examples were shared in the presentation about progress or increases in accountability and things like that. And I'm, I'm looking at the one that talks about the awards and basically going up 5% a year. You know, when, in my, in my world, when somebody comes to me and says, oh, we project 10% increase in sales every year for five years, you know, that's pretty hard to do after a year or two because of the compiling and all that stuff.
Brian, you're breaking, Brian, you're breaking up on us. Stay close to your computer, I think.
Juan, what criteria are the increases based, I guess, is what I want to ask. We're, we're projecting, we're making these projections. Are those reasonable guesses? Are those, what about this plan says that that's going to happen?
Yeah, I can answer that. This is actually a brand-new indicator that we're adding for the high schools. And this indicator includes both industry-recognized credentials, which is, are those third-party credentials that students can get while they're in school. But it also includes any community college awards that students may receive. So like, a lot of programs are built so that students can get community college certificates, diplomas, and even associate degrees while they are still in high school. And so since this is a brand-new indicator, we don't have the historical data for this. But we do know how many students are getting community college awards already because we've been collecting that data for a long time. So over the last couple of years, you can see it's around 10 to 11%. So that blue line on that graph represents just the community college awards and not IRCs. So once we add IRCs into this picture as well, and we anticipate many, many more students getting IRCs than community college awards. So that's why this 5% increase every year is here. So it looks ambitious, but it is realistic based off of the initiatives we have in place for IRC. So I know that the school districts are working really hard to get IRCs incorporated into their secondary CTE programs. We have the credentials to careers grants. We have the IRC diploma seal, which is an incentive for students to get these IRCs as well.
If, if there was a change in staffing at the community college level, could that have a negative impact on these projected achievements, awards?
I, I think that would be hard to say because if a student's getting a community college award at the high school level, they're going to be getting that through taking concurrent enrollment. And I know for several of the community colleges around the state, it's, a lot of times it's the high school faculty that are teaching those classes, not the community college faculty teaching the classes. Because the high school faculty have to have, they have to meet the qualifications of the community college. And for CTE programs, that's actually less rigid than what they'd have to have for a high school to teach just a plain high school class. So I, I wouldn't anticipate staffing changes, at least from the teaching level, as long as they're using their high school staff to teach the classes. I know that's, that's not the same for every community college, but I think for the most part, that's how a lot of people treat it.
Other questions?
Let me ask this maybe to Director Snow. What, what would happen if we said, no, thanks? Well, I mean, what happens then if we don't approve this?
No, no thanks to the Perkins State Plan.
Yeah.
I think we would, I believe approval is required for submission, correct? Almost yes. So then we would need to reevaluate what caused the negative vote and then bring it back as soon as possible and, and explain that to our colleagues at the U.S. Department of Education.
We would certainly have to ask for another extension. I think we could be conditionally approved, so we receive our allocation for FY26, which we've already have that allocation. But we would have to ask for another extension. And I believe they want this by the end of fiscal year, but it would be up to them.
So Heather, were the secondary schools requesting additional funding as far as the split?
They did during the public comment period.
And did they say how they would use additional money?
You know, it was everything, all the high-impact purchases and, and a lot of it tied into current technical student organizations as well, trying to fund those.
Is that a new mandate?
It's been, it was introduced in our original Perkins Five Plan five years ago to take effect this year as far as the required alignment of a. um to take effect this year as far as the required alignment uh of a uh CT program to the Career and Technical Student Organization for Perkins eligibility.
So local school districts have to have a, a club or organization that's, that's a requirement that wasn't there before. Is that correct?
Right.
That is not a requirement on post-secondary in the proposed plan.
Right. So we're putting additional additional responsibilities on the secondary schools for these clubs.
It was, it was in the previous, it was required as part of the previous four-year state plan. So it's not new to this one. No.
One thing that is new to this plan, though, it has articulated um is shifting um the support for post-secondary CTS those to be optional as opposed to required as it is in our current state plan.
Say that again, Mackenzie.
Uh, post-secondary CTS those become strongly recommended, but not required under the proposed state plan.
I would.
And that, that's again based on community college feedback.
That would definitely be something that I would think that we should revisit if it's, if the, if the schools are requesting additional funding to support student organizations and it's impacting instruction at the community college level. I would think that would be something we'd want to dig into a little bit deeper before we impact the funding formula. If that's what they're requesting funding for.
And I think as Kale indicated, it's for multiple uses of funds, expanding work-based learning opportunities, expanding the opportunity to attain industry rec, industry-recognized credentials as well as CTSOs.
Work-based learning experiences don't necessarily go through the community colleges out of their statement.
They can, they absolutely can on both the credit and the non-credit side.
But can they do their own?
High schools, yes.
The secondary can also choose to direct funds to the community college.
So I'm taking that the, the plan is okay, except for there's a question about the split. Is that? When we boil it all down, is that what the issue is? Is the split? I'm asking board members.
I think so.
For me, for me, I'm just trying to logically understand how the 7%, I mean, I understand it's an average of other places. But I, I don't know how much I care about that because I, of the things that are, of the things that the 7% is reserved for, I'm more interested in like building the percentage based on what we think's appropriate for those things to cost as opposed to, well, everybody else is doing this. And um, and then I'm, were the comments at the public comment today, were they shared all along or are they new today?
The theme on the split is not, that's not new, you know, for today.
Yep. I, I, I think that was generalized in the presentation um about the differing perspectives submitted by secondary and post-secondary CTE programs. I think specific details, um, I, I, I don't know were included in prior public comments about um the, about that which was shared by the, the two respective community colleges that provided a comment. But the theme, I think, is consistent in the differing perspectives.
Okay, here, here's, here's how I'm thinking about this. We have an excellent program going here on all this, and I don't think anybody is questioning that or the plan and the process. There's been great work done here. I'm just wondering, is, is there any downside to the allocation that could have a deleterious or a detrimental effect on the success achieved so far? Because I don't think any of us want to inhibit the improvement of something that's really good. And I don't think any of us want to hurt anybody in this process. And I, I feel like there's some winners and losers here. And then lastly, is the fact that
Brian, you're breaking up. Brian, you're breaking up again.
See, the community school districts not material enough to help them as much as it might be detrimental to the community colleges. Those are, those are, those are the questions I have.
Okay, you, you're kind of breaking up on us a little bit. So you, the, like, to summarize, you're concerned about is the proposed split going to be detrimental, neutral, or a positive?
Fair, fair, fair summary.
Okay. So I'll make sure I captured what you were saying there.
And, and can I ask, um, the way I heard it or read the information was this next year, uh, 26, it's holding steady. It's really the following, right, two, three, four that is changing that. So is there an opportunity for this board to say, we approve, you know, so we can move forward with the, the 26 funding and plan, but then have time, reserve that time to come back and re view and relook at that distribution of funding for the following years? Or is this an all or nothing?
We, we could, if the board approved, we could um submit and then ask what the process would be to if the board ultimately, in future discussions, request an amendment to the plan, uh, request an amendment to our approved state plan, we uh, we could certainly explore that. Um, and then I think to your, to your point, um, Board Member Deets, the team did build in uh to its proposed plan a transitional year to ensure that those conversations, collaboration um could occur before any funding impact was observed.
So basically, the question is, in a nutshell, once submitted and approved, can the plan be amended?
Jeff, do you know?
Yes, I can. And um, uh, with extenuating circumstances, so such as, uh, let's say a board decision.
It's, this, it's in code that this plan has to be approved by the board, it's both in code and rules, so that, that we could use that as the rationale.
And we can verify that by reaching out to our um Perkins Daza and the Andrew Johnson.
Yeah.
But we'd have to approve it with the formulas in it the way that they are.
Correct. It could be, um, Thomas, please, um, but it could be a motion to approve with rehabat, with um presentation, for example, to the Community College Advisory Council and a, another presentation to the State Board of Education following that at its September meeting, for example.
Didn't see a response.
Objections.
Is that, is that?
I will make that motion.
What is that, Brian?
What Director Snow just said, that we approve, approve subject to community college meeting and uh, and uh, board, State Board of Ed uh reevaluation and consideration of any potential amendment at our September 2025 meeting. And only with regard to the allocation part of the plan.
And, and when you're saying allocation part of the plan, are you referring to, because I think you raised another split, the state activity split at 7% um that funds our CCTCs, our College and Career Transition Counselors, and our credential to careers grants? Are you specifically referring to the funding split between secondary and post-secondary CTE programs uh current, in the prior plan at 50/50 and the current plan at 60/40?
Um, I, I, I would like to say the former, but I'm willing to compromise on the latter. So it would just be the, the split, the current split, 43, 57, basically versus 60, 40. I'll, I'll live with the, I mean, these pages aren't numbered here, so it's hard for me to, it's the fiscal responsibility part of the Perkins Five Plan that I'm looking at, where you listed all the states, then the next page is, the next page is the actual formula. So I, I would say it's the, it's the split allocation that I'm talking about.
Um, where I see it is under, yeah, this isn't, under C fiscal responsibility 2A, where it refers to 60/40 in fiscal, beginning in fiscal, federal fiscal year 27, 28, 29.
That's the section number.
Basically, a problem with the September meeting, we go through this, is there enough time to collect information? Setting ourselves up for a deadline and we may not get as comprehensive information as we should be getting. And I, I love our community colleges. I support them 100%, but I'd also like to hear from the school districts themselves as well.
Mm-hmm. That's a good point. I, 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 I would uh take that as a request to amend the motion. And I'd say, how about next March or something like that? I don't want to wait till next June, that's all.
Yeah.
June would be too late.
So uh, this is Thomas Mayes, just a quick question for the subject matter experts. What's the, what's the glide slope or how much time is necessary for an amendment to work through this process? Because an amendment would have to work some sort of process. It, it couldn't be ad hoc.
I think it would have to be before the fiscal year.
The turnaround time is fairly, it's a few weeks with the U.S. Department of Ed. I don't know, Jeff, if you have experience with the, with the last extension we had.
Service response times have been slow lately. So um, I would say that.
March may be too late.
March's too late. Um, I would say before January 1.
All right, let's, we're meeting in December, right? It'd be December. Are you doing another amendment to your motion, Brian?
Yeah, December 5, that we would do this uh review of after input from community colleges and school districts, we would accomplish that on or before our December 2025 meeting.
Do I need to second the motion to ask a question?
Yes, you do.
Okay, I will second the motion so I can ask a question.
Oh, favorite? No, go ahead.
Uh, is there a chance our amendment would not be approved?
There, I can, um, that is always a possibility. It is also a possibility that the state plan is uh returned for additional comments when it is submitted to the U.S. Department of Education. It, it seems unlikely that that would occur based on the state funding split because it is determined by the state.
Any further questions or discussion, Thomas?
Uh, this is Thomas again. I just want to level set. If the motion is successful, then the years two through four split becomes a status quo. An amendment would be required to reverse that. It wouldn't be required to adopt that. So moving the plan forward with the ability to, with the understanding that it would be reconsidered, if not, if no action happens, if no amendment is requested, years two through four take effect. So the, the amendment approving this plan would not change two through four unless there's affirmative board action to do so.
That's my understanding.
Understood.
And if we opted to not approve the plan today and request an extension, how long could we ask for an extension to go through the process and do the work we need to do to submit the plan right the first time?
Good question. We would have to, we would have to, I wouldn't know.
I, I think the concern that Heather raised is um we're, uh, you, the U.S. Department of Education working through allocations and ensuring that we're not delaying the distribution of school year 25, 26 funds. Um, a- and again, that's uh the, the approach articulated um would allow us to ensure that funds go out on time uh while continuing to, continuing to receive public comment that we would ideally have had time for additional discussion around.
So Nate, our E01 for our division, it must be listening into this meeting because he just sent me what we can do. So we have two options. Um, option one is to um submit a brand-new four-year state plan next year. So you can, you could do that, I guess. Um, or make, you can make annual revisions to the state determined performance ladder or levels, any other state plan revisions that the eligible agency determines to be necessary pursuant to Section 122 of Perkins Five and a budget for the upcoming fiscal year. So we can make annual updates to the plan.
Okay. Any further questions or discussion? So the motion is to approve the plan pending a review of this proposed 60/40 split in year two.
I would, not pending, uh, it's approved and we will.
Okay, approved and we will conduct whatever studies, public hearings, or whatever is required to review the split uh no later than December 25. Okay, so that is, that's the motion. Since we're remotely, I'm going to do a roll call vote. Cindy Deets.
What am I, approve or motion? I, I.
Are you, we're voting on the motion.
Yeah, I, I vote to approve.
Okay. Brian King.
Aye.
Cass.
Nay.
Mary. You have to unmute Mary. We lose Mary to the roll-in line. Oh, she messaged you. Okay, you're bruised. I will also vote yes. It's approved under the, under the conditions we set in motion. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate that. Appreciate your work. All right. I'm going to finish strong. We got Eastern Iowa Community College.
All right.
You're on, Robin.
Perfect. Hello again. My name is Robin Lilienthal, Administrative Consultant in the Bureau of Community Colleges. As you know, one of my areas of responsibility is assisting with the state accreditation process for our 15 community colleges. I'm here today to present the accreditation report for Eastern Iowa Community Colleges, which encompasses Clinton, Muscatine, and Scott Community Colleges, serving six counties along the Mississippi River in Eastern Iowa. The full accreditation report is part of your board materials. Today, I will give you a presentation highlighting details from the report and then our and then our guests led by Dr. Wee, interim chancellor, who will share some of the E I C C key priorities and initiatives. Thank you all for being here. Again, one of the roles of the state board is to review the accreditation reports and approve the continuing accreditation for the community colleges. Today's Eastern Iowa Community Colleges Accreditation Report is the final of three reports this year. We will begin our twenty-five, twenty-six cycle in October with Southeastern Community College, followed by Northwest Iowa Community College in November and North Iowa Area Community College in January. I'll quickly remind you that the state accreditation process is structured with two major components, the assurance component and the continuous improvement component. Since all of our visits this year, our interim visits, our reports focus on the assurance component, which includes a review of the college's most recent Higher Learning Commission report as well as an evaluation of the eight state standards. The department team reviewed E I C C on February twelfth and thirteenth of twenty twenty-five after conducting a desk review that included two external reviewers. Severe weather forced our on-campus interviews to become virtual meetings, but the department review team was still able to engage in dynamic conversations with faculty and staff from E I C C over Zoom. The team made a site visit on April second to tour facilities at Scott and Muscatine Community Colleges and to interview students from across the district. Overall, E I C C submitted thorough desk review materials and the department team had an excellent visit with faculty, staff, and students. A few themes emerged. E I C C has navigated significant leadership change over the past few years. The new chancellor search was grounded in a new strategic plan and shared vision to prepare for a successful transition. Faculty and staff expressed appreciation for the opportunity to support students and E I C C focuses on creating a sense of community for all. State accreditation strives to complement the accreditation triad, including the college's standing with the Higher Learning Commission. The department team analyzed the college's most recent mid-cycle review conducted in October twenty twenty-four. H L C recognized E I C C's approach to shared governance, the college's strong community partnership, partnerships, which include notable workforce engagement. H L C also commended E I C C for effective student success initiatives and fiscal responsibility. E I C C maintains H L C accreditation. However, a federal non-compliance finding was issued related to the assignment of credits, program length, and tuition tuition section of the federal compliance. The H L C team identified some examples of irregularity in the contact hours associated with the same courses offered at regular semesters and shortened semesters. The college reported to the department review team that they have identified the source of the discrepancy and are implementing corrective actions to prevent this in the future. The federal non-compliance also resulted in a criteria three A met with concerns finding. So the college will be submitting an interim report to H L C describing their steps and addressing findings in December twenty twenty-five. The department team recommends E I C C evaluate and improve its policies and processes to ensure H L C rule compliance and requests a copy of the December interim report when it is submitted. E I C C will undergo H L C reaffirmation of accreditation during the twenty thirty-four, thirty-five cycle. Standard one is a review of faculty qualifications. No accreditation compliance issues were noted in this area. The department recommends that the college improve its documentation process to include detailed evidence of work experience related to C T E disciplines and to identify the specific courses used to qualify arts and science faculty with master's degrees outside of the discipline being taught. Standard two is related to code restrictions on faculty teaching load. E I C C has received a finding in this area. Code and Rule states that the college is expected to give each faculty member the right to accept or decline overload teaching assignments. The longstanding faculty master agreement states that C T E faculty are denied the opportunity to refuse overload. The agreement language uses collective consent. E I C C reported that they consult with faculty each semester regarding their teaching assignments. E I C C must remove the contract language by the time a new contract is negotiated and must seek overload consent from individual faculty during the interim. The college must submit final contract language to the, to the department when this expectation is fulfilled. Standard three relates to special needs and protected classes. No accreditation compliance issues were noted in this area. E I C C staff and faculty take a great deal of pride in serving all students. The department team identified a number of strengths in this area, including each campus staff's disability services personnel. The college has simplified the accommodations process for students. Complaints are received and routed through an electronic process to ensure timely responsiveness and the college has developed a comprehensive Title IX website. To build upon its strengths, the department team recommends reviewing recruitment and written materials to ensure they are readable and to add the section five oh four contact person to the annual notice website. Standard four pertains to expectations related to career and technical education programs. No accreditation compliance issues were noted in this area. E I C C exhibited several strengths in this area, including a four-year program review cycle that includes a thorough faculty training, peer reviewers, and action plans presented to leadership to support funding requests. Comprehensive labor enrollment and success data sources are reviewed for each program and career and technical student organization opportunities are built into programs for students. The, the department recommends a few ways to improve the program review process, including a student return on investment analysis for each program, aligning reviewing processes with strategic planning, and ensuring advisory committees represent different industry roles and the meetings document meaningful and robust committee discussion and decisions. The department team was particularly impressed with E I C C's community colleges' relationship within the regional planning partnership. This has been identified as a promising practice profile, which, as you know, is a new addition to the state accreditation reports. These profiles are programs, processes, and practices identified through the accreditation review process that other community colleges are encouraged to consider replicating. Key highlights include the R P P, which includes representatives from area high schools, is involved in Perkins Five funding allocations for secondary C T E programming. Several E I C C C T E programs host joint advisory committee and R P P meetings. And E I C C has collaborated with high schools to embed industry-recognized credentials within C T E programs, concurrent courses, and career academies. Standard five is focused on strategic planning. No accreditation compliance issues were noted in this area. E I C C exhibits many strengths in its planning processes. Highlights include broad stakeholder perspectives were engaged in the plan's development. Faculty forums promoted shared governance. Core teams provide participation opportunities for faculty and staff. Smart goals measure success and the new strategic plan offers the new chancellor a vision and strategies to execute upon his arrival. To build upon strategic planning strengths, the department rec, team recommends extending the SMART goal approach to connect unit-level plans with institutional plans. Standard six expects colleges to maintain physical plant and facilities master plans. No accreditation compliance issues were noted in this area. The department team identified notable strengths in this area. Faculty provide input on facility improvements. Classrooms are designed for a consistent student learning experience. A community healthcare facility is being co-located on the M C C campus. Annual resources are allocated for disability infrastructure needs. Safety communication and training are broadly disseminated and behavior interten, the behavior intervention team reviews risks and develops responses. No recommendations have been identified for the physical plant and facility standard. Standard seven is quality faculty plan, which meets the code expectation for highly effective faculty hiring and professional development processes. No accreditation compliance issues were noted in this area. E I C C exhibits strength in this standard, including a comprehensive onboarding and mentoring program in place for new faculty through the New Faculty Training Institute. New faculty receive three hours of release time per semester to attend training and acclimate to college teaching. And adjunct faculty are required to attend meetings with department coordinators. The department team recommends linking professional development activities to instructional competencies and clarifying their connection within institutional priorities. Finally, standard eight is a review of the college's senior year plus program. No accreditation compliance issues were noted in this area. E I C C maintains an effective senior year plus program with strengths including the college connections program staff maintain continuity of processes and procedures across all districts, school districts. Collaboration with school districts maintains program compliance. Data sharing with high schools provides student participation and success information. E I C C provides staffing at nearly all school district to support counselors and students. And the accommodations guide clearly explains to students, parents, and school personnel the difference between K twelve modification and college accommodation. No recommendations have been identified for the senior year plus standard. This concludes the summary of E I C C Community Colleges Interim State Accreditation Report. The department review team recommends continued accreditation of E I C C through the next state comprehensive accreditation evaluation, which is scheduled for academic year twenty twenty-nine, twenty thirty. But before moving to your questions and board action, I'll turn things over to our E I C C colleagues here who will share more about the exciting things happening on campus. Dr. Wee.
Thank you. Yes, good morning. Thank you to the Board President Robbins, Director Snow, and all the board members who are joining us through Zoom. One of the favorite saying at Eastern Iowa Community Colleges is that we do life better together. And so with that, I just want to say thank you to our bureau chief Amy and her team for being flexible with us. We can only serve our students well when we really have partners who also give us very honest feedback and the accreditation through the Higher Learning Commission and the state. And by the way, we also have N A S A P coming up for concurrent next year. So we welcome those. And I just want to start with this slide. Please go back. This was a photograph that was taken by chance of our graduation a year ago and it stuck with me. We realized that the folks who gave us the opportunity served them. We are not the end. We are just the beginning. And as you can see, it impacts much more than the graduates. Next slide, please. One of the things that really guide what we do every day is the vision. Very simple words. How do our actions and decisions, programs, so on and so forth, change lives and makes our, our community stronger? And we believe that through the accreditation process, we have a better idea of are we really changing lives? And how do we demonstrate that? At the same time, are we really making our community stronger? And so today, what we're going to do is actually tell our stories. Next slide, please. As you can see, every year, Eastern Iowa Community Colleges, we have really the honor and privilege of serving over twenty-three thousand people in our area. And over eighty-some percent of our folks live, play, work, and learn in our community. So we truly are a college of the community. And definitely in terms of companies, over two hundred and fifty companies. So without further ado, I'm going to introduce my two colleagues here, Jeremy Pickett in the academic affairs side, and then Brian Kelly, who really lead our strategy and planning. Gentlemen.
Thank you. Good morning. I, my name is Brian Kelly. I serve as the Vice Chancellor for Strategy Support and Planning and the President of Clinton Community College at Eastern Iowa Community Colleges. Want to show our appreciation for Amy and her team. We really look at them as partners, co-collaborators, and a resource. With a comprehensive plan to move forward with all of our recommendations that we've, we've had. Next slide, please. Shared directions. We appreciate being cited for our faculty and staff and student investment. Over ninety people were involved with creating our strategic enrollment management plan. We had seventy staff, faculty, and students, including board members in our higher learning plan. And we recently, just this Monday on the sixteenth of June, had a new strategic plan developed for twenty-five, twenty-nine. Using those SMART goals that Robin talked about earlier, specific, measurable, attainable, relatable, relevant, and time-bound. We went through a practice with the H L C and this was recommended. Next slide, C T E. Want to talk a little bit about the bond that helped us build three facilities within the Eastern Iowa area, approved by over seventy percent of the voters in, in our region. Uh, next year, over three hundred students will participate in these career academies in high school, earning credentials. We've been the recipient of a few cap grants which helped very much and we have signed ten-year contracts with our high school partners, being able to fill those seats in those academies. Want to tell a quick story about a student, Carson Birkin. Carson is a student at Northeast High School in rural Goose Lake. Carson, Carson is part of the F F A program. Carson won first place in the Agriculture Mechanics Competition at the Iowa State Fair this past year with a device he calls the hitch hooker. It's a device you put on the back of a tractor to attach multiple implements, saving time switching those implements between. It's a universal, uh, device that hooks those up. Carson has learned how to be entrepreneurial. He experienced, uh, exper, experiential learning. He received a credential and he had real-time experience. So the perfect match. Carson will leave us with, with the credential and, um, shows what our career acad, uh, career academies can do to impact our students. We also focus on our transfer pathways. We have strengthened our transfer pathways through new, um, agreements. We're integrating advising and communication to support our students. And, uh, Dr. Pickett is going to tell you a great story about a recent collaboration with our neighbor St. Ambrose.
Yeah, so what we did is we looked at our data and noticed that just as many students were transferring to our local private institution as they were to some of our public ones. And so we feel like it's important to provide all opportunities for them to transfer. And as many of you know, we have the, uh, transfer majors that are going on in the state of Iowa. Uh, we've collaborated quite heavily with the regents and the community colleges. St. Ambrose was one of the first privates to inquire and ask about joining the transfer majors. And as you know, many of the community colleges, uh, with the privates in the state, almost all the privates have signed on and ascribed to the transfer majors as well. Another very interesting partnership that we have is, um, St. Ambrose came to us saying, hey, could you offer our students some classes who are off path related to our healthcare track? And so they don't have the capacity to be able to offer maybe a smaller number of classes in anatomy and physiology, chemistry, et cetera, for those who are going into their B S N program. So interestingly, they came to us to offer the St. Ambrose students some of their, some of our classes so they could transfer in and be on track and in an easier manner. So I think that's just a, a great example that we have related to seamless transfer. As Dr. Wee mentioned, we have two hundred and fifty businesses that we serve in a wide variety of different areas. The W Ted Fund, W T E D Funds are, are something that we're being using to expand our career academy offerings. Anytime you have an expansion for career academies, we need the faculty in order to be able to offer and teach those. So W Ted Funds does allow us to be able to use those as seed money in order to help get those started with the idea then of them, uh, coming off of W T E D Funds and moving into our general fund. And we're doing that for a number of positions, uh, for our, for our academies that we're really getting to go on in the north up at our Clinton area. Uh, we also do a lot with two sixty E and F in order to, uh, attract companies to the area. Atlas Roofing, Fair Oaks Foods. Atlas Roofing, Fair Oaks Foods, Sterilite are just a couple of examples that we've used that for. And then we have another of other collaborations with our business and industry, Carver Pump, who makes pumps for the military. Nestle Perina is another one that we've done quite a bit with, participating in some of our registered apprenticeships in order to train their folks related to the related training and instruction that they need to receive for their for their apprenticeships. One thing I'd just like to highlight here that we've been doing, it's like the got moved to the line there a little bit. So this was something that we did just recently in the month of April. And so many of you know, April is Community College Month. We try to do a number of things for our community related to Community College Month to highlight all the great things we're doing. Some of that is we offer a lot of free classes. And the free classes that we've offered are, the automotive department did one on hybrid cars. Our culinary program did one on making scones. Our IT department did one on navigating your smartphone, for those who maybe aren't so smart with their smartphone. The core program did some on true tree pruning. And then we also had our HVAC program do some DIY HVAC projects that they might be able to do in their own residential home. The one I want to share with you is this multidisciplinary simulation that we did primarily with our healthcare division, but our criminal justice program also jumped in on that. This was actually put on by our nursing faculty member, Jessica Leann. And she actually won yesterday during the Iowa Association of Career and Technical Education. Director Snow mentioned that, that that went on yesterday. She won the education, the post-secondary professional of the year award. And she was the one who helped put this on. So we didn't know that until yesterday. We submitted our PowerPoint several weeks ago. And she was the one who actually did that and has now won that award at the state. So I want to share with you just a little bit about how we did that and how we did this multidisciplinary simulation. And we invited the community to come and participate in that with us. So we have a brief video on that. I'm gonna pull that it goes and plays. Yeah, so we thought that once simulation really demonstrates what we can do when we have the resources in order to be able to do those things as well. You'll notice that. I'm gonna watch it again. All right. Last thing that I'll share with you is just our our strong partnerships with our K-12s. That was referenced by Robin here as one of our strengths. We feel that we have great partnerships with them. Significant amount of our enrollment is a K-12 partner. Anywhere from forty-five plus percent of our total enrollment is a high school student. And we attribute that to the really strong partnerships that we have. We do a lot of things even with our with our AEA's as well in order to help strengthen that partnership. One of the things that I want to highlight is that we actually share faculty members with our K-12 partners. So we send Eastern Iowa Community College faculty out to teach in the K-12s. But we also hire K-12 faculty members and have shared agreements with them in order for them to teach in our career academies. We have an example of that where Tammy in the north is teaching in our healthcare academy. She's a faculty member at Clinton High School. And we have contracted with Clinton High School Community School District in order for her to come and teach in one of our career academies because she does hold the credentials in order to teach the community college as well. I'll also highlight here, we have the CCTCs. That's the College and Career Transition Counselors. That was something that was actually started at Eastern Iowa Community Colleges. One of our superintendents locally came to us and asked if we had an interest in this idea. We weren't calling it CCTCs at the time, but came and met with us and said, I have this idea. And out of that, we have now hired several folks who have been CCTCs in our area. And in fact, again, talking about that Iowa Association of Career Technical Education, we had Holly Hanson, who won the counselor and career development professional of the year award at that conference yesterday as well. And she is one of our CCTCs as well. So we've had really great experience with that. It's something that was that Eastern Iowa was proud of, that we were the first to go on the CCTCs. And it's really turned into a statewide initiative that that we think is serving our students very, very, very well. So with that, I'll turn it back over to Dr. Wee.
Just wanted to reemphasize again how much partnership meant to us. Not just with the K-12, not just with the business industry, but definitely with agencies such as Department Education, Workforce, IEDA, and definitely at the regional and also the federal level. And so without all these partnership and collaboration, we won't be able to do what we do. So that is very important. Next slide, please. Again, I end with this slide, just the beginning. That's what we're always aware of. We are simply one, one piece of a puzzle of a journey of all the people who come through us, regardless of their age. And for us to have the honor of doing it is great. It was mentioned that I'm a short timer. I certainly am. Next week will be my last week with Eastern Iowa Community Colleges. We will have the privilege of welcoming Dr. Brian Ranfro. He starts on July one. And I want you to know that similar to what Brian talked about in terms of having teams of people coming together to really collaborate and partner on projects. Internally, we have a forty person team responsible for transitioning this chancellor to our college. Not for the first week, not for the first month, for the next entire year and beyond. And eight of the forty are responsible for helping his family transition. So for us, we are not just doing the partnership for the folks who walk through our doors. We are also making sure that internally, we take care of our own as well. Because if we want to do life better together, we definitely have to have that relationship and have that communication. So on behalf of the colleges, I just want to say thank you for allowing us to be part of the process. Just a trivia. Those three colleges are not all the same in terms of history. Clinton is almost eighty years old. Muscatine is almost a hundred. SCOT will be sixty next year. So it's really a consortium of three colleges with different length of history coming together to serve the county in our Quasity area in our region. And we're extremely proud to have that consortium. Thank you again. Any questions or conversation from our board members?
Dr. Wee, I just want to say thank you for your years of service to the community college system and all the great work that you've done. You've certainly been a leader and we're grateful for that.
Thank you. Robin, you identified a promising practice again.
Yes.
Thank you for doing that.
You're welcome.
Do you want to elaborate on that at all? I read about it a little bit, but.
Yeah, it would just be really if the college wanted to, and I think we had some, but.
Yeah, that was the RPP one?
The RPP, yes. So maybe a little bit more about.
So I do think in Eastern Iowa, and that's a tribute to the AEA out there. They've done a really great job of including the K-12s, twenty-four of our partners, and then as well as the community college. So we're at the table, faculty are at the table, our department coordinators are at the table. We've offered professional development for the K-12 folks. We've allowed them to get some training. We've been coming out to the college in order to certify them to be able to teach and offer some of our courses as well. And I think just talking into all the things that go on with that, even some Perkins dollars. We allocate a portion of our Perkins dollars to the K-12s. And they have a process where they're actually vetting proposals and vetting requests from the K-12s in order to use their RPP money. And we bring our contribution to go and to help fund those as well. And so that's just an alignment of curriculum. It helps with the pathway, using very similar equipment in the K-12s as they are at the community college when they're taking those classes. And so that alignment and that work, we feel is really strong in our area and something that the rest of the state could probably take a look at and model after. Mike Zimmer is someone who's been running that for a time. He was a newly elected legislator, so he stepped away for a little bit. But having folks like him being able to lead the RPP has been very beneficial to us.
Thank you for the explanation. And the follow up question is that have we figured out a way to make these promising practices known to others?
Well, we, the first thing that we do is that we always publish them in the Community College Leader Bulletin. So that has broad distribution. I'm not sure how many subscribers there are, but there are many of those. We have them in these presentations. I'm gonna look to Amy to see other. We've talked about maybe highlighting some of them with some of our technical assistants.
I think that's the other big webinars. The other annual technical assistance calendar. And we pull in experts from across the colleges wherever we can. And so now these are on our radar so we can get them into webinars to spread the word more broadly.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, you're.
This is Thomas Mays. I've got a question of a more personal interest being from the Quasities and having family who've gone through Scott community in Todd. Many years ago, the just the beginning and stronger together. What is your like, how is your planning? And how do you concurrently plan with your partners across the river? Because the sort of like the unique bi-state region, how do you work with Black Hawk? How do you work with industry that might be on both sides of the river? Being a Quasities, being born in Illinois, grew up in Iowa, understanding the unique dynamic there, interested in your perspective on that and how you work on both sides of the river.
Eastern Iowa Community College is really very fortunate to have the Illinois partnership, for example. The river separates us, but we have bridges that we built. At the executive level, we meet every quarter. So the presidents and all that, we come together and actually talk about what are the challenges and opportunities? And so we really keep in touch. Palmer, for example, also part of that. So we have the private and public. One of the recent development, very exciting, is what we call the Manufacturing Institute. And that is really with University of Illinois, Iowa State, you know, Western Illinois University, us and Black Hawk. And what that really allows us to do is look at the asset of the arsenal over there. And how do we actually support not only the military in terms of the Army and Navy, for example, but how are some of the technology that can be filtered down to manufacturing, to businesses? So we are extremely important part of that. We continue to do that. In fact, through that partnership, we actually have AstroAmerica that's located in Illinois is actually co-locating on our Blong Center on the Iowa side. And Iowa State, just this month, created a program for the first time in Iowa to actually teach non-destructive analysis of materials. So for us, those are things that we always don't take for granted. So thank you for that asking question. So at the high level, we talk about what's coming us. And then we filter down to how can those things be specific projects that we can work together?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just before you conclude, I also just want to echo board member halls. Congratulations of Dr. Wee. As you all know, Dr. Wee came out of retirement after serving over a decade as a president of another institution and has deep dedication to not only these institutions, but to the community college system and the strength of our community college system as a whole. So thank you for your partnership and congratulations again.
Thank you.
Thank you, Director. Any questions? Anything else from the board? If not, I'll entertain a motion, please.
I would move approval of continued accreditation for EICC.
Okay, it's been moved by Cass. Is there a second?
Second. Cindy.
Second by Cindy. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, may. Motion's carried. Congratulations. Thank you. Thank you. And with that.
John, can I ask a question before we?
Sure.
I know we're past Perkins and we made a motion, but a thought occurred to me after we made our motion. Would it be possible if we reconsidered? So let me get my thought out, but could we adopt the plan, keeping the formula status quo and consider the amendment to change the formula after we've had a chance to vet it? So could we repeal the motion we made and make a new motion? If the board was in favor, adopting the plan with the formula as is? And then do the amendment to the plan, changing the formula once we've confirmed it? I just, my hesitation with it is we've adopted it and we're not confident in the formula. And if the amendment doesn't get approved, or then we're moving formula forward with a formula that could be detrimental to the system, to Brian's point, the way that he said it. So I understand the urgency of adopting the plan, but I just am not confident in the formula. So that's my thought. Could we adopt it status quo? And propose the amendment, changing the formula as opposed to amending the formula?
Thomas?
It would, it would require sort of bringing it back to the table and an amendment to sort of set aside in prior order. And then further discussion about the line item amendment to the plan itself. I think all three of those steps are necessary rather than doing it all at once and I think that the subject matter experts would need to come back and discuss like, what's the butterfly effect if that happens? So leave that to the board's consideration, but procedurally, this is a small assembly. Robert's rule, Robert's rules are a little less stringent than a three hundred person assembly or the general assembly. But that being said, because of the stakes, it would need to be sort of an orderly progression of bringing it back to the table, rescinding, and then substantive discussion on board member halls' proposal.
Thomas, isn't it also true that to reconsider this generally takes the motion to do that, to be made by somebody who voted in the affirmative?
Yes.
So what you're saying, it couldn't possibly be done today?
It could be done today, but it would require one of the yes votes to ask to have their vote reconsidered and then make the motion have it seconded. And then that, that's the board member, it's correct. That's the condition proceeded to starting.
Okay. So is there anybody who voted in the affirmative that wants to move that? I'm assuming it requires a second as well.
Yes.
I'm not hearing anything.
Well, I would just ask to the board members, I think there's just due consideration that we need to give in passing this formula, knowing just the comments about that there's better recommendation, more recommendation process that could have happened before we pass the formula. And if there's a chance that an amendment wouldn't go through, or we don't follow the process coming back, I'd hate to see the formula change. I know we have a year, but there's a lot of things that can change between now and then. So I would just hate for us to make that decision. And, you know, Brian, you said it best, that the system isn't broken right now. And this could really change things. So you just heard a great presentation from EICC about how they're partnering and using those Perkins funds in a really great way. So.
I'm comfortable with the motion that we made. I think we'll get the feedback that we want. I think we'll consider it. And we'll have to, I mean, we're gonna have a lot of opportunities to discuss this. I think, I think I'm comfortable where I'm at. If someone else wants to make a motion, that's up to them, but I'm not gonna do it.
Yeah, and I would agree. I feel comfortable and obviously since.
Yeah, and I would agree. I feel comfortable, and obviously, since it's my last meeting, I won't be there. But I'm sure Cass, that you and Brian and Mary and the other members of the board will, you know, make sure that the request is followed through and that we look at how the allocation of the funding impacts both organizations and just the delivery of the service for the students. Because I think, you know, at this point, the other question is, you know, there's so much up in the air regarding other streams of funding. And I don't think I understand, obviously, all the elements that go into delivering, you know, the programs under Perkins Five. So I think you'll have an opportunity to look at all that and make adjustments, or at least bring those forward as opportunity.
Well, I think that's just the, keep in mind, the amendment isn't within our control. Even if we do our best work, it doesn't mean that it will get approved by the Department of Education or timely approved by the Department of Education. So.
True.
Well, if that happens, I assume we're gonna hear about that pretty quick before the end of the month.
And then I thought that the comment was we can also potentially submit a revision or a request to amend on an annual basis. So if you don't get the okay to do the whole thing, then address next year or whatever. So you can kind of parse it out as you, as you move forward.
Well, that's my point. I think it would be better if we were doing that based on the formula that we know is right as opposed to having to deal with correcting the formula that we're not confident in. You see what I mean? So if we approve the plan with the existing formula, it would be better to be amending each year if we have to go year by year to change the formula as opposed to trying to correct the formula that we passed that wasn't.
I guess I'm not, I'm not convinced that the plan is in error. That's why I'm looking for additional information between now and December. I'm confident that the department will conduct whatever research and meetings they need to conduct to make sure that the board has all the information they need to make a decision as far as to approve an amendment. I know that you come from the side of community college, and I love you for your passion with community college. I really do.
No, I come from the side.
I'm also an advocate for K-12 schools as well.
I come from the side of wanting to make sure that as we have the funding, it impacts the students in the best way. So I know I'm advocating for, I'm advocating for students, and it appears I'm advocating for community colleges. But it's, the challenge here is that the plan was presented. We have one meeting to decide, and there's questions to go through it. So I, my challenge is being put on the spot to make a decision on this today, and we have to pass the formula to meet the deadline. And that's what's frustrating in these moments. So and, you know, now there's challenges that I'm trying to rectify the formula to serve Iowa students best and put the money in the right places, and there's questions we can't answer. And the more time we have to think about through the discussion of the formula, there's just different things that come up when we're sitting around the table. So, and that's what's hard. So it isn't about the colleges or K through twelve. It's about where the impact of the dollar happens. So I don't want to see the money shipped from one spot to another and lose the impact. That's all. And then tie our hands.
All right. All said.
Well, thank you.
I have not heard, I've not heard a motion to reconsider. And Mary's comfortable with the previous vote as well. So hearing no motion to reconsider, we are adjourned. Thank you so much. But before we leave, we want to make sure we send our best to Cindy. Thank you so much, Cindy.
Thank you.
I'm not sure when we'll see you again, and maybe we can have an appropriate send-off party.
Yes. Well, you're all invited. You're all invited to Cedar Rapids on July seventeenth for the Community STEM Day, which will be at the Collins Aerospace Facility in conjunction with the Southeast STEM Region Team. So y'all come to that. I'll be there. It's amazing.
All right. Thank you, and thank you for the invitation. We are adjourned.
It's been great to have you.
Thank you.
Take care.
Thank you all. Bye.